Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to give the few thousand seat gallop initiative development committee a quick statement. I'd like to leave it to the five of you guys to take this opportunity to comment on what they need to accomplish in the individual individual events that we're all about.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Gillette is absent. Councilmember Bill De La Peña present. Mayor Pro Tem Glancy?
Here.
And Mayor Irwin is absent.
Thank you very much. Request for continuance in public hearings. Consent items seven C and seven H have been pulled, and item twelve B will follow the consent calendar. Tonight, we have -- we'll begin our special presentations with a short video from a recent interview that was done on Time Warner Limited Edition. Recently, Mayor Irwin appeared on Time Warner's Local Edition and shared with residents a few of the city's many positive accomplishments. So if TO TV would please run the video.
And welcome to Local Edition. I'm Bella Shaw. We've seen a lot of women in high-profile political positions as of late, and we're very fortunate to have one of them join us today. Jackie Irwin, the mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks. Good to see you, Jackie.
It is really a pleasure to be here today.
I understand this mayor position is on a rotating basis. Just tell us a little bit about your background and how you got involved in politics.
Well, certainly. I did run for the first time for city council four years ago. My background is in engineering. I had worked for a number of years as an engineer, and then when I had kids, I decided to stay home and got very involved with their education, started after-school enrichment programs, and finally became president of the youth football organization. And in that role, I decided that we needed to have a partnership between the city and the schools to improve the three high school fields. And with my work on that, one of the city council members took note and encouraged me to run for city council.
And here we are.
Here we are. I never thought I would have been in elected political office, but I'm thoroughly enjoying it.
Here you're doing interviews on Time Warner's.
That's right.
You're really moving up in the world, aren't you, Jackie? You've got three areas of concern that you've been focusing on. Let's talk about the environment first. I noticed that you brought your paperwork here, because there's a lot going on, isn't there?
Well, there certainly is a lot going on in Thousand Oaks, and we were going green in Thousand Oaks before it was even fashionable to go green. One of the big things, I remember moving to the city 12 years ago, they had compost bins and compost workshops, and, you know, coming from LA, I'd never seen anything like that. And that was kind of the first hint that Thousand Oaks is really trying to preserve the environment. One of the things we have is we're building our transportation building. It is a LEED-certified transportation building, and that's a standard that is looking at sustainable, green building and development practices. But one of the things I'm very proud about also is our wastewater treatment plant. We recently put solar panels down there, and we are using cogeneration, which takes the methane from the solid waste, and that's also being used to generate energy for the wastewater treatment plant. Between those two things, the treatment plant is off the grid probably four hours of the day, and those, between the solar and the cogeneration, we are providing 53 percent of the energy for the treatment plant. In addition, if you count all city facilities, the library and city hall and the wastewater treatment plant, we are 35 percent renewable energy. So I think that that is really an outstanding thing that we're very proud of. We also, the city fleet is a third alternate energy vehicle, and that's also a really exciting thing. We're putting solar panels on our parking structure. We want to really show the citizens that we are a leader in sustainability, because we think if we set the example, they will follow.
And automobiles, you're way ahead of the time as far as fuel efficiency.
Oh, yeah. We are definitely always looking every time a car is purchased to see if it is feasible to buy an alternate energy car. So I'd like to eventually see hydrogen cars there, but that's probably going to be taking a while. And the other thing that Thousand Oaks is known for, one of the amazing things, is we are 40 percent protected open space, and hiking trails there, parks, and our residents really appreciate the city council's commitment to open space.
And public safety.
We, if you ask residents what their number-one priority is, it's always public safety. And we, for the first time last year, and I think it's been five years, hired two additional police officers. One of them, what we did is we converted the DARE program to the SRO program and hired one additional police officer. We basically have three police officers, one on each of the high school campuses. We thought it was very important to protect the youth from, well, it's not only the drug and alcohol, but also the potential violence that can happen on the high school campuses. And then we also hired somebody in the internet predator position. Been hearing a lot of stories about the dangers of the internet for the young people in our community, and we have a true commitment to protect them. So Thousand Oaks is always one of the top-ranked cities in the country as far as safety. This time for cities of our size, we were number two. So very proud of that, and we do continue to fully fund public safety.
So much to talk about, Jackie, in too little time. I was going to mention that Nordstrom is coming your way. You'll have to come back and visit with us again. Jackie Irwin, the mayor for the city of Thousand Oaks. This has been Local Edition. I'm Bella Shaw.
Thank you for the remainder of our special presentations. How's that? No, that's much better. Thank you. Tremendous difference. Our second presentation is an annual event at our city council meetings. We look forward to recognizing the Cano Open Space Trails Education Days written essay contest winners. We have with us tonight Elaine Hagan, who has been instrumental in shepherding this program for many years, and she's going to tell us more about these young creative writers. Elaine?
Thank you. I'm Elaine Hagan, and I'd like to also introduce Julia Osborne, who is the chairperson of the Cano Open Space Foundation. Julie's going to say a few words first. This year, 1,600 fifth graders took part in the 17th Annual Trails Education Day Program, which we describe as a crash course in environmental and open space education. The students spend a day in Wildwood Park, beginning with a nature hike through the canyon and participating in three fun and educational programs, with the help of nearly 100 staff and volunteers. Seventeen of the 20 schools in the Cano Valley School District participated in Trails Education Days writing contest this year. The Cano Open Space Foundation provides prizes for two winners per school and five grand prize winners district-wide. The grand prize-winning letters, as well as photos, and more information about Trails Education Days may be found at the Cano Open Space website at www.cosf.org. And Elaine now will introduce the grand prize winners. Thank you, Julie. As I call your names, can you please come stand here beside me? First is Nikki Prelooker of Acacia Elementary. Thank you, Nikki. Next, Adam Tadini of Medronia Elementary. Faria Hamid of Westlake Elementary. Hannah Chee of Westlake Hills. And Julia Cohen, also of Westlake Hills. Hannah concluded her grand prize-winning letter with this observation: "I have now learned how lucky I am to live in a community that has areas such as this that provide both education and beauty to all of the lucky citizens who venture inside. We're all lucky to live in Thousand Oaks, a community that places great value on natural open space and our trail system. Thank you all for all that you do to preserve these marvelous resources, and thank you for your support of Trails Education Days."
And this is it? Nikki? That was a beautiful essay, hon. Congratulations and very nicely done.
Thank you.
Are you going to read the others or no? Adam?
Adam.
Adam. Congratulations to you for a lovely essay. I hear it was great.
Thank you.
Freddie?
Freddie.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah? Congratulations to you, too. And Julia? Certainly not least. Congratulations. I think all five of these youngsters need a great round of applause. for team commission, and Thousand Oaks is indeed lucky to have so many young people that are involved in the community and want to be involved, so we're extremely fortunate. Tonight, we have additional winners. We have students from Thousand Oaks and Westlake High who are being recognized for their recent sports victories. Know what a tremendous hard work and dedication it takes to excel on the field. Anyone who reaches CIF Division Finals certainly deserves congratulations. We have some exemplary student athletes here tonight. They have achieved title CIF Division winner. I'd like to invite Thousand Oaks High School Athletic Director Jason Klinger to come forward and tell us about their school's spring champions.
Good evening. On behalf of Tim Carpenter, Principal of Thousand Oaks High School, it's an honor to be here tonight to introduce to you two phenomenal athletes. The first, this is the first time in Thousand Oaks history, two men have won a CIF doubles championship in tennis, so it's truly an honor. The first, Dennis Lynn, Jr., is one of the top players in the nation in singles, teamed up with a little freshman, Marcus Gion, who is also one of the best up-and-coming freshmen. These two accomplished a great deal and, again, captured a CIF tennis championship. So I'd like to introduce them very quickly, Dennis Lynn and Marcus Gion.
Gentlemen, congratulations. We have two commendations here. I'll read one. Commendation in honor of these two gentlemen, you know what? I'll read them individually. Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team Member Marcus Jerron, 2008 CIF doubles champion. Whereas Marcus Jerron, a member of Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team, represented the Marmonte League in the doubles championship; and whereas Marcus teamed up with Dennis Lynn for the first time in this year's CIF doubles competition, performing admirably and excelling in this event with a loss of only one set; and whereas the entire Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team, coached by Dave Asserson, showed team commitment and sportsmanship; and whereas Marcus Jerron, his partner Dennis Lynn, and the Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, Jackie Irwin, Mayor of Thousand Oaks, City Council of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Marcus Jerron and congratulate him and his partner Dennis Lynn, the team, and coaches for their 2008 CIF championship. Congratulations. Now, the other half of the team. This is a commendation in honor of Dennis. Whereas Dennis Lynn, a member of Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team, represented the Marmonte League in the doubles championships; and whereas Dennis teamed up with Marcus Jerron for the first time in this year's CIF doubles competition, performing admirably and excelling in this event with loss of only one set; and whereas the entire Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team, coached by Dave Asserson, showed team commitment and sportsmanship; and whereas Dennis Lynn, his partner Marcus Jerron, and the Thousand Oaks High School Boys Tennis Team demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, Jackie Irwin, Mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Dennis Lynn and congratulate him and his partner Marcus Jerron, the team and coaches for their 2008 CIF championship. Congratulations. Now, I'd like to ask Mike Giles to come down, our athletics director, to introduce TO swimmers.
Mike?
Thank you.
All right. First of all, I want to congratulate the Westlake Girls Co-Chairmanists for doing a tremendous job, having a great season. And on to Camille, Camille Duckett, I've had the pleasure of bragging about for the last four years, and she's been an absolute blessing to Thousand Oaks High School Aquatics, a godsend for our program. She's a tremendous, tremendous swimmer, her second year in a row of being an individual CIF champion, and she has been certainly, you know, a team MVP, co-captain for our program. She's all-league, she's all-county, she's all-CIF, and she's all-American. And she's going on to college, where she'll be, again, doing a tremendous job up there in San Luis Obispo. I'm very excited for her, and can't wait to have her back for our grand opening wall of fame somewhere to be down the road. Again, Camille Duckett, outstanding.
Camille, first, I'd like to congratulate you on having such a wonderful career in school, and certainly wish you well as you continue. Commendation in honor of Thousand Oaks High School Girls Swim Team Member, Camille Duckett, 2008 Individual CIF Champion. Whereas Camille Duckett, a member of Thousand Oaks High School Student, won 2008 CIF Division Two Championship in the individual girls' swimming 200 Freestyle Varsity Event. And whereas Camille won this individual event with a time of 1:49:36, as she and the Thousand Oaks High School Girls Swim Team represented the Marmonte League in this year's CIF championship competition; and whereas Camille and the team, coached by Mike Giles, showed outstanding commitment and sportsmanship; and whereas Camille Duckett and the Thousand Oaks High School Swim Team demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, Jackie Irwin, Mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Camille Duckett and offer congratulations on her 2008 Individual CIF championship. Okay, and now we have Westlake High School Swimming Coach Todd Ermas introducing their swim champions, and tell us about their victories.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council members for recognizing the sport of swimming at Westlake High, and I echo Coach Giles in congratulating the Thousand Oaks girls. They always bring out the best in our girls. It was a great season this year. Our girls were undefeated with an eight-no record, six-no in league. And at this time, I'm going to have our relay members come on down. We were CIF champion this year in the 200 Freestyle Relay, and in that relay, we broke the CIF record, and hopefully it will stay for a while. It was an outstanding relay. In fact, the top three teams, the first, second, and third place teams, all went faster than the CIF record, so it was an exciting race to watch. We also have our 400 Free relay members here. But first of all, we'll start with the 200 Freestyle Relay. These girls also won the league championship, and so it was a really exciting relay to watch. And I'll give them to you in order of the, in the order that they swam. First of all, we have Jackie Brusseau. There. She was our leadoff. Our second swimmer is Iris Yan. Unfortunately, Iris is studying for my Spanish III CP final right now. She has an 89%, so she could not be here, but she's here with us in spirit. Next up, we have Marissa Dewan. And our anchor, Aislinn Smalling. I'd also like to let you know that this relay, along with our 400 Free, which we'll introduce in just a moment, is all-American in status, which means they're the top 100 in the nation. So it's an outstanding group of young ladies. I'd also like to let you know that individually, Aislinn and Jackie are all-Americans in their respective individual events. Jackie's all-American in three events, and Aislinn in two. Aislinn 200, 500 Freestyle, Jackie 50 Free, 100 Breaststroke, and 100 Free. So this is a great group of people. I also wanted just one final thing with Aislinn. Just this weekend, she was voted the Ventura County Hall of Fame Athlete of the Year, so congratulations to her. And our other relay champion was our 400 Freestyle Relay at the end of the meet, and in order of swimming, Jackie Brusseau again. Marissa Dewan. Actually, Marissa went third, right? And Megan Norlin Christensen. Over there. And Aislinn Smalling. Congratulations to all of you girls. You did an outstanding job. I'm very, very proud of you.
Coach, I have two commendations here, one for the 200 and one for the 400 Relay. I'll read the 400. Commendation in honor of Westlake High School Girls 400s and 200 Freestyle Relay Team, 2008 CIF Division Two Championship. Whereas Westlake High School Girls Swim Team, representing the Marmonte League, won the 2008 CIF Division Two Championship in the Varsity Girls 400 and 200 Freestyle Relay. And whereas swim team members, in this case, Jacqueline Brusseau, Megan Norlin Christensen, Marissa Dewames, and Aislinn Smalling, excelled in their relay event with a time of 3:33:57. And whereas the team coached by Todd Ermas showed commitment and true sportsmanship; and whereas Westlake High School Girls Swim Team, 400 and 200 Freestyle Relay members, demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, Jackie Irwin, Mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Westlake High School Girls 400 and 200 Freestyle Relay Team. Congratulations to you all and the coaches on your 2008 CIF championship. Congratulations again.
At this time, I'd like to add to our request for continuance, the statement that our Down there. Okay. For our last presentation this evening, is our spotlight on the city, where we take a few moments to highlight one of the many unique environmental programs that make Thousand Oaks a premier community. We have Kristen Ford, our Cano Open Space Conservation Agency manager, who will tell us how we can help to keep our trails beautiful. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Glancy, and members of the council. As you all know, Thousand Oaks has nearly 15,000 acres of open space and 140 miles of trails, most of which are managed by the Cano Open Space Conservation Agency, also known as COSCA. In order to help maintain the trails throughout the city, COSCA relies on the assistance of volunteers who participate in six different COSCA-sponsored volunteer programs. Tonight, I'll be telling you about three of those programs. The first is the Adopt a Trail program. In this volunteer program, individuals or groups become sponsors of a trail or of a section of a trail. Sponsors are asked to make a one-year commitment to maintain their chosen trail, either by going out and doing the cleanup themselves, or by donating funds and supplies to COSCA for us to do the maintenance. Adopt a Trail participants generally perform minor maintenance tasks, like painting trailhead kiosks, making sure there are plenty of trail maps at the kiosks, or picking up litter along the trail. They can also assist the COSCA Rangers with more complicated maintenance tasks, such as the removal of non-native vegetation or trail improvement projects. We have plenty of trails still available to adopt, and it's a great opportunity to get outside, get some exercise, and do some good for the community at the same time. If people are interested in a volunteer activity that's less formal and requires less of a commitment, we also have the Trail Watch program, in which volunteers don't have to maintain any specific trail or commit to any specific amount of volunteer time. Whenever and wherever they happen to be hiking, biking, or riding their horses in the open space, they just keep their eyes and ears open, make note of any maintenance issues that need to be completed, and report their observations to the Rangers. Having these extra eyes on the trail is very helpful for the Rangers, and it's a great way to contribute if you're going to be out hiking or riding anyway. For people who are interested in getting really involved in volunteering in our trail system, we also offer the Trail Patrol program. Trail Patrol volunteers perform uniformed patrols on foot, by bike, or on horseback to assist the Rangers with more official Ranger-type duties, such as providing information about open space rules and regulations, and keeping an eye out for maintenance issues on the trails. Trail Patrol members go through a formal training program and are issued uniforms, radios, and first aid kits, and they are asked to sign a one-year agreement. They should be willing to be assigned to patrol specific areas of the trail system and maintain a patrol log reporting their activities. All COSCA volunteers in the programs I just described are asked to fill out a volunteer waiver, attend a volunteer orientation, and should be over the age of 18. All of COSCA's volunteer programs are administered with the assistance of the Cano Open Space Trails Advisory Committee and the Cano Open Space Foundation. We're always looking for more trail volunteers, so if members of the community are interested in any of these programs, they can find more information on COSCA's website at www... at www.caneho-openspace.org, or they can call me at 805-449-2505. And I'd be happy to provide them with more information about our volunteer programs. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Appreciate the report. Madam Clerk, please call public comments.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. And speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Four people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first public speaker is Barbara Kloster, to be followed by John Dawkin.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Kloster, Thousand Oaks. And believe it or not, I'm still an equestrian. Mayor Glancy and council members and staff. I am here this evening to tell you about a neighborhood under siege. This is a neighborhood adjacent to the Cano Creek Equestrian Park. I live in one of the few remaining equestrian areas in the Cano Valley. And for 34 years, I have made it my goal to keep the equestrian lifestyle alive. I am a member of ETI Corral 37, and I am very proud of what we have accomplished in the last 51 years of our existence. Because of an incident that occurred in the Cano Creek Equestrian Park, things have escalated into an out-and-out battleground. A horse owner took it upon herself to turn in two of her neighbors for too many horses. She did this as an act of revenge because she was expelled from an equestrian club. The expulsion was made because of a speech she made at a public meeting denouncing the board members. This disturbed the dignity, order, and harmony of the club. And following the bylaws, she was dismissed as a member. It is now completely out of control, starting from restraining orders, court dates, and twice-a-week counseling for an eight-year-old child who has been extremely traumatized. Did it stop there? No. She proceeded to bring a friend to one of the other victims' backyard, and then the aggressor stuck his head under the fence, threatened to kill this victim's wife and daughter by cutting off their heads. This person in our neighborhood, who is supposed to be an animal lover and equestrian advocate, does not even live near these neighbors, just on the same street. All this from a person who is also in violation with too many horses, animals, and numerous other code violations. All because of an exaggerated event that could have been prevented if the leash law was followed. Our equestrian lifestyle is in jeopardy, threatened, and has caused an invasion of our privacy. Many equestrians in the area are furious about this and have openly expressed their opinions, putting them in the line of fire. While others are afraid to alienate this person in fear that they will be turned in also. She has been given a power by the people that are afraid of her and is a menace to those who openly oppose her. I know that there is not much you can do for the equestrians in our area. I just wanted you to be aware that reports made for revenge and revenge only might well be taken with the grains of salt, considering the source. The equestrians will work with the city and the powers-to-be to possibly get this matter straightened out. Hopefully, this will happen without further harassment from this neighbor who professes to be a victim to all who would listen, but in truth, has made all of us victims of her venomous actions. After all is said and done, I can sleep at night. I don't see how she can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kloster. Next speaker is John Dawkin, followed by John Davis.
Well, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is John Dawkin. I am a proud resident of Newberry Park. And as you might know, I have the distinct honor of being the chairman of Citizens for a Strong and Healthy Thousand Oaks, which was dedicated to the defeat of Measure B. On behalf of, on behalf of this volunteer citizens organization, which grew to become the single largest coalition of community groups and individuals ever united for a single cause in the history of this city, I would simply like to take a moment to say thank you to the residents of Thousand Oaks for voting down this initiative and to thank all of those whose hard work and long hours went into this campaign. When it was all said and done, our membership was comprised of 25 community organizations and government entities and more than 750 local residents and recognized community leaders, who all gave their names to oppose Measure B. Collectively, they put in literally hundreds of volunteer hours, wrote more than 20 newspaper opinion editorials, and more than 100 letters to the editor. This truly was a team effort, and it resulted in a resounding double-digit defeat for Measure B. And we would like to express our heartfelt thanks to everyone who was involved in this effort. We also encourage all of our coalition members and fellow residents to now move on from this campaign and to continue the work of making Thousand Oaks the truly great city that it is. We also thank the council and the city staff for providing this public forum throughout the campaign for all sides to present their views and opinions on Measure B. As I think we can all agree, two of the cornerstones of a successful democracy are a fully informed public and a free exchange of ideas and information. This public forum provided both of these elements throughout the recent campaign. And our coalition thanks all of you. Measure B's defeat does not mean that the challenges our city faces will now simply disappear. It would be naive of us to think so. But the outcome of this election does signify that the City of Thousand Oaks will now be free to tackle our challenges and embrace our opportunities without unnecessary and cumbersome burdens. Once again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. And on behalf of our coalition, we look forward to a very bright future in Thousand Oaks, which, as we all know, is truly a world-class community. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkin. John Davis, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, council. I live in Thousand Oaks. I just moved out here three years ago. I live on Brazil Street. For some reason, Brazil Street and the Street Pinfield has been turned into a personal dumping ground for an old man that lives somewhere in the City of Thousand Oaks. He doesn't live anywhere near our area. We have three cube vans, which are basically old bread trucks, one hooked up to the back end of another one, two or three old campers full of garbage boxes of whatever in the back. You can see it from the rear. And they've got a bobtail truck, box type, that's got out-of-state tags on it, sitting on the corner across from one of the 7-Eleven stores there on Pinfield. I've talked to all the businesses around there. I've talked to residents in my area, homeowners around the surrounding areas. Nothing's ever done. They got signs in that say, you know, no parking between certain hours, but it's never enforced. They got signs on my street that Roy Myers did put in graciously that said, no vehicles above eight or six feet high. Some of these trucks are eight feet high. The thing is, they sit there for days. The apartment, driveway going out of the apartment complex where I live, you can't see around some of these trucks sometimes. People have almost been hit. I've almost been hit, where I had to turn right and go all the way around the block. The man, a friend of this owner of these vehicles, who moves these vehicles once in a while, he moves them about every three to four weeks. According to what I was told by Sergeant Bennett, there's a 72-hour parking limit. It's not enforced on Brazil, nor is it enforced on Pinfield. Nobody can find out why. The management of all the other complexes, I've talked to managers in apartments on St. Charles, where you still live. I've talked to the managers on the Warwick complex. But I noticed, two days ago, I went up on Warwick, they finally put signs in that said, no parking between 10 o'clock, 10:00 PM, and eight or six o'clock in the morning, up to a certain stretch. Okay, up to where the homes start. But now, but they still don't have any on maybe Brazil. That's where they really haven't needed bad because, again, this old man, whoever he is, I don't know who he is, but he's got this collection of old trucks. My question is, are they insured? Which I question. But anyway, they sit on my street for days. Why? If there's a 72-hour parking limit, why isn't it enforced? I addressed this to Mrs. De La Pena. I did this about a couple of months ago, I believe. Talked to her over the phone. She said, do a petition. Unfortunately, I don't have the health or time to go knocking on all the doors. And I can't get in the building at Cano Future Village. I've talked to their managers there. He said it's been an ongoing problem for years. The thing is, Sergeant Bennett knows of this problem. Sergeant Kenny knows of the problem. Sergeant De La Santos, I've talked to him.
Mr. Davis?
Excuse me, sir?
Can you wrap that up, though your time is over?
I'm sorry?
Can you wrap up?
Okay, well, I just, can anything be done about this?
You know, the police chief will have a talk with you outside the foyer.
Because I've talked to, I talked to the city attorney's office recently.
Chief Carpenter will be more than happy to speak with you.
Excuse me?
Chief Carpenter will be more than happy to speak with you.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, just a moment. Councilwoman Bill De La Pena has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Glancy. Yes, good evening, Mr. Davis. I do recall speaking to you over the phone. It was my understanding-
Mrs. De La Pena, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm hearing a purring that echoes in here.
Good evening. I remember speaking to you over the phone. And it was my understanding, when I referred it to staff, that this matter had already been discussed or worked on. So I'm not sure whether there are any, there's any progress report. But I'm sure that after you spoke tonight, that city staff will look into this, especially as Mayor Protem Glancy mentioned, Chief Carpenter, to see how that situation, that problem can be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me a second. The police chief is preoccupied right now.
Ms. Davis? Just one moment, one moment. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kidway, you're next. And you're our last public speaker.
I begin in the name of God, who's most beneficial, most merciful, Nekigbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. Last time I checked, still director of Concerned Citizens since 93. And see, Dr. Glancy, just keep moving on, up and up. Crazy enough to miss the Lakers game. Hopefully, they are winning. How many blessings of God can we thank? I mean, I'm fairly well to listen, and I'm not in a wheelchair. So that's one of the reasons I'm glad to be over here. Even though the party's over. I mean, it's been busy with Measure B. And I want to thank the citizens of this city for not being duped once again by being fed the thing about slow growth. It's amazing, even my wife is almost on the other side. Because the argument is so sexy and appealing. If you don't read papers, and if you don't read the packets, et cetera, to try to keep Thousand Oaks the way it was 25 years ago. I'm really not that happy with the council and the majority of the planning commissioners because they did not really, in my humble opinion, take a strong position, a clear position, unlike the minority that just used it like it was their personal campaign. I mean, this bag over here is full of, I mean, it costs a million dollars. And so it was, it's a good souvenir for me. I saved these for 10, 12 years. I mean, the hospital clearly said it's not a matter of the vote, but the time. That was the main essence. This is the wonderful Doctor Bill De La Pena, who delivered my grandchild. He's a great doctor. And disappointed, here's Doctor Block. He delivered my second son 25 years ago. And came out against this just like so many people. And then they had all these fine people in small print. The real issues are not tackled. I've been asking for a long time why COSCA, which is a bigger project, is going through without a hearing. And then the planning commissioner, I was told yesterday that there will be a hearing. So I guess having this kind of issue and the limelight has brought it. Even though I support it, in fact, I was told by people at COSCA that, that it's taking longer for them. And that's the problem, because the inspectors do not come on a regular basis, et cetera, and throw monkey wrenches on a perfectly wonderful project. Thank you for letting me speak. And I again congratulate the citizens of Thousand Oaks for defeating this Measure B.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Item seven. We recall that items 7C and 7H have been pulled. Are there any questions of council? Yes. Councilwoman Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. Move to approve the consent calendar?
We actually have a speaker on this, on consent. So let's hear from Mr. Kidway first. Mr. Kidway?
Nekigbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. Unfortunately, speaking on the consent calendar again. Well, it's a small price to miss a Laker game. I might, I might as well, might as well look at the consent calendar, which used to be under hanky panky at past midnight, so seven o'clock. So that's the good news. Mayor, I just really don't understand why no written copies of the minutes are waiver. I mean, this is, I mean, you have 50 copies of the agenda. Every, you had COSCA over here, Park District. Every agency that you go to has a dozen or so minutes available in hard copy. And when people are sitting over here, it's a, it's a good, it makes for good reading. I guess until people from the Chamber of Commerce or some of the more influential people come and complain, this will not be changed. I know C has been postponed, but I hope I can just speak for a minute about this theater season brochure. I remember when the theater first opened, the brochure was printed gratis by Verizon. In fact, they were my customers, and I saw it being printed in Westlake. And these things, I mean, this novelty of having a new place, et cetera, goes down. And now these, it's more and more on the taxpayers that these burdens fall. And I know there was some praise leaped on the council earlier. And I admire Dr. Glancy as a wonderful citizen of this community. But when are we going to really be fiscal conservatives over here and really take the job seriously and not have wasteful taxes or have on the agenda, on as a measure, whether the city should subsidize the theaters, rather than these half-hearted measures? I also want to talk about D, which is an approved expenditure of the annual slurry seal. A gentleman came over here and spoke about problems of street parking. I mean, I had Mayor Bill De La Pena and eight count, eight staff members from the Public Works Director and all that come to our neighborhood regarding a traffic problem. And one of the things that I brought to the attention of the former director was the bad condition of the streets. And I was told, well, it's on a schedule, but it will be done in a year. Two years have passed, and the street is, the street's almost falling apart. And we are not due for slurry seal in our neighborhood. I mean, I don't know what methodology this city uses. But if you don't do these on time, it ends up costing more money. And even though the staff really talks to me very politely, very nicely, like Ms. Lawrence, but the bottom line is, it's very difficult to get things done. I don't know why. Thank you, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We'll now move to 12B, which is an oral presentation. We're pleased to have tonight with us Norm Rosenbloom, who's a board member of Ventura County. Yes. Councilwoman Bill De La Pena, would you please pick up on your motion? Councilwoman Bill De La Peña, would you please pick up on your motion?
Sure. I will repeat the motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Please vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Glancy, you need to vote.
I did once.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. As I was saying, we're pleased tonight to have Norm Rosenbloom, a board member of Ventura County Civic Alliance. The alliance coordinates the Compact for Sustainable Ventura County, which is a project intended to help citizens, local governments, and stakeholders to identify solutions for and a common vision for such items as land use, environmental conservation, jobs, housing, and transportation. The first phase of the compact was launched in early 2007, in combination with Ventura Council of Governments and Southern California Association of Governments. Mr. Rosenbloom is going to present the findings of that first phase. Mr. Rosenbloom, nice to have you with us tonight.
Well, thank you, Dr. Glancy. And good evening, City Council, members of the audience. I am pleased, on behalf of the City Civic Alliance, to be able to present the results of Phase One of the report, which in fact is the Compact for a Sustainable Ventura County, meeting the quality of life issues that we do face here. And as Dr. Glancy has stated, it is a partnership project of the Civic Alliance and the Ventura Council of Governments. For those of us in attendance here who are not familiar with the Civic Alliance, I just want to take a few moments and talk about what inspired the creation of the alliance. Essentially, there were three factors, and the first was the realization that we, as a whole community, as a county, are facing complex challenges, issues such as population growth, economic shifts, air quality, the water supply. And by their very nature, these are problems that cannot be solved by local government working alone. The second factor is a recognition that if we do want a healthy and sustainable future for our county, that we as citizens cannot be complacent. All of us need to roll up our sleeves and invest our time, our talent, and hopefully some treasure, and to become part of the solution. And the third factor was a commitment to embodying the spirit of real civic engagement and community leadership, and to nurturing and fostering these qualities in the broader community, so that we can work together to take control of our future. As Dr. Glancy said, well, okay, at first, the Civic Alliance, just a little background here, too, is the initiative of the Ventura County Community Foundation, and we were formed in 2001, launched in 2001. And we currently have membership from all the cities throughout Ventura County, and we are based in the tenets of what is known as the Three E Principle, which means that on every issue, we want to address the sustainability of economic viability, environmental quality, and social equality. To explain a little bit about what is a compact, for our purposes, we wanted to find it as an agreement entered into by multiple jurisdictions of the region in order to attain greater benefits that could be achieved without cooperation across political boundaries. And we have found, especially in other compacts throughout California, that successful compacts have full participation from all jurisdictions. These are the most successful ones, and the full participation from early stages and broad public engagement and support for implementation. So, the goal of this compact is to create a vision for the future of Ventura County that embodies the Three E Principles of equity, economic viability, and environmental sustainability, and to establish policies and commitments for achieving this vision. We do understand, and we realize, that many decisions are very local. However, we have also learned from other regions, and particularly in California, that whatever process we pursue, it will need to be open and inclusive. We will need to find ways to engage diverse communities by demonstrating how regional issues impact them at home. And a compact has to be grounded in common values and principles. And the compact working group arrived at a set of six guiding principles summarized here on the slide. And even though that maybe not everyone will agree with these principles, we do believe they are a good distillation of the shared values of Ventura County residents, and an excellent reference point against which to measure the success or inadequacy of any local or regional actions. The compact process asks four questions, and in total, it seeks to answer these set of questions, once again, shown on your screen here. Phase One, which was just completed, asks, where we now and where are we going? Phase Two, which is scheduled, hopefully to be funded by mid to late 2008, will deal with where we want to be in developing a preferred future. And Phase Three will deal with finalizing the compact, developing an action plan, and a timetable, and the beginning of implementation. The Southern California Association of Governments, affectionately known as SCAG, supported Phase One, based on the joint Civic Alliance and VCOG proposal. And the support consisted of funding two expert consultants. One firm was from Portland, Oregon, known as Friganesi Associates, and the other, a local firm located here in Ventura by the name of Solomore Research. And the focus was on data collection, identifying goals and policy options, and analyzing a range of future scenarios. The centerpiece of Phase One was a public workshop that was held at the Cal State Chano Islands just about a year ago, June of 2007. We had over 130 residents, business owners, civic leaders, who worked in small groups around a large-scale maps of the county. And the purpose was to consider alternative future growth scenarios for Ventura, and graphically define their vision for the county based on different combinations of residential, commercial, and transportation infrastructure development. I'm wondering if anyone here in the audience attended? The following, the following the workshop, each of the 19 maps, there were 19 groups, was converted into a digital map database and studied by the consultant teams in detail. And this is showing a composite map, which was created from the 19 individual maps at the workshop. And in general, you'll see the more intense colors, the reds, oranges, dark blues, represent the more concentrated residential, commercial, and mixed-use development. And it is evident that there is not much proposed expansion outside the current SOAR The participants at the workshop stuck pretty well within the existing SOAR boundaries in accommodating the next 200,000 people and their jobs, and that is a forecast projected at the year 2035. They generally had a strong preference for compact development around existing transportation infrastructure, and all the participants strongly supported preservation of open space, including farmlands and wildlife habitat. They chose a path that could change or truly would change existing conditions, and as it pertains to housing mix, the future would contain a larger fraction of multi-housing dwelling. Presently, we have in Ventura County about 25% multifamily, and it would have to rise to approximately 60% in future developments. As a follow-up to the workshops, and to get feedback on the scenario results, the Civic Alliance hosted two open houses in Ventura and one in Simi Valley in October of last year. And a survey was provided that asked the residents to rate proposed options for five issue areas, including housing, future growth, jobs, environmental quality, and transportation. The survey was also posted on the internet, and a total of 107 people actually completed the survey. Now, the results from the workshops and open house feedback show that there is substantial public support for a unified approach to Ventura County's challenges. What emerged was not a desire for grand visions of sweeping change, but rather a focus on individual policy options that will address issues already aligned with the compact guiding The workshops and open house identified four major topics as critical to the future of the county, and those included the managing of future population growth, environmental and agricultural preservation, housing supply, and a balanced transportation system. We see the only viable way to address the challenges facing us is using a regional approach, evolving an agreement on principles, and incorporating measurable implementation standards. And in Phase Two, which we do expect to run through the end of next year, we will engage stakeholders and the public in a more in-depth discussion of the four topics, once again including managing population growth, protecting environment and the agricultural, meeting housing needs, and improving regional mobility and accessibility. The next step will be to develop a comprehensive list of policy options for analysis and regional consideration. The ultimate goal is to draft a regional collaborative agreement on how to accommodate change while preserving those attributes that make Ventura County a great place to work and to live. VCOG and the Alliance will continue to work together on this project, and we will seek to actively involve the cities, the county, business leaders, and community organizations in developing greater ownership of both the process and the outcomes. And for any of you who may wish to receive more information, detailed information, whether it's on this Phase One results, there is a website, which is civicalliance.org. It happens to be a wonderful publication piece, which, Dr. Glancy, I believe you already have a copy of. Other items, such as the state of the region report that we have published for 2007, is also available. And I certainly would encourage active participation, and once again, of your time, your talent, and even your treasure. Dr. Glancy, any other observations or comments on your part?
You know, none at this time, but I appreciate the rather complete presentation, Mr. Rosenbloom. Are there any questions of the presenter? Mr. Fox?
Yeah, Mr. Rosenbloom, I'm just curious, I think you mentioned, where does your, the funding come from for the consultants? Does that come from SCAG?
That was from SCAG.
And how much is that?
You know, I don't have the exact figure. I believe it was $150,000 in total for the year.
And that goes into putting this report together?
Say again?
That goes into putting this report together?
That I believe was. I can't be certain on that.
Okay.
I can't be certain.
All right. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
And again, thank you very much. Sure appreciate it. Now, clerk, would please call public hearing aid A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number 79-2 Annual Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2008-09. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have one person who has presented a speaker card in pursuit to council standards. The speaker is allowed five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. I believe Mr. Spurgeon is going to have a staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Glancy. This is our annual approval of the engineer's report and levying of assessments for the coming fiscal year for our Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. We do not have any annexations this year, so we don't have ballots to count and tally and report back to you. This district really is in very good financial condition, and this is due to good policies that have been established over the years, as well as good management, probably for 10 years or more. And because of that, we are recommending that the assessments not be increased for the coming fiscal year, and that they actually remain at the current year's values. We do recommend, though, that the maximum assessment amounts be increased by the voter-approved inflationary factor, so that we can maintain a buffer in case future maintenance costs outpace inflation. The streetlight assessments that we are proposing for the coming year are $9.40 per household per year, so a very reasonable amount. And the landscape assessments vary depending on where you are in the city, and how much landscaping your property benefits from, but those assessments are up to about $325 per house per year. There are two resolutions to approve tonight, and staff recommends that you do so. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Any questions of staff? See none? Thank you very much. In that case, our public speaker is Mr. Kidway? It is a mistake. So, there are no public speakers on this, there are no questions of staff on this. Councilwoman Bill De La Peña?
Well, as soon as we close the public hearing, I'm ready to make a motion.
Actually, I would entertain a motion to continue this on a closed hearing basis, and, no, I wouldn't. No, I wouldn't. Thank you. Councilwoman Bill De La Peña, please continue. The motion, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much. I move to approve recommendations for both resolutions, as recommended by staff.
Any comments? Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much. And now, for 8B.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, Annual Collection of Delinquent Wastewater Service Charges, Property Tax Roll. Speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council, and we have one speaker card for five minutes.
Thank you very much. And we have a report by Terry Scott.
Good evening, Council. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's annual property tax bill. Wastewater account holders are notified via billing reminder notices, and letters are sent annually notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcels for amounts that are 120 days past due, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city-- letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the past due amount to the property tax rolls. Today, there are 212 parcels averaging a delinquent balance of $246 each totaling Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution and approve the names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the council, or to, excuse me, to the county tax collector for inclusion on the property tax bills. Passage requires a two-thirds vote of the members of the legislative body, which, for our council, means an affirmative vote of four council members. Staff is available for questions.
Yeah, we're going to progress here. We need to hear from the speaker first, but Ms. Albano has a comment?
Mr. Mayor doesn't, Mr. Mayor Protem doesn't mind, I was just going to explain it now, what we're going to do. We are conducting the public hearing, we will close the public hearing, and that's why we're going to entertain, the mayor Protem will ask for a motion to continue it for deliberation purposes, and then we will have the other members that are absent tonight review the tape of the public hearing, read the documents, and then you will vote on it at the next meeting. And the reason we're doing that is a timing issue for us to be able to be timely, to properly notice the public hearing, and be able to comply with the county deadline. So that's what we're, why we're holding the hearing itself tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Yes, Councilwoman Bill De La Pena.
Are we then still hearing from the one speaker who has submitted a card? Okay.
Yes, we're going to do the whole hearing, and it'll be closed and continued on a closed public hearing basis.
Thank you.
There is a supplemental menu that lists the properties that are involved with this. Any questions of staff thus far? None? Thanks. Mr. Kidway?
Nick Egbal-Kidway, a customer of the sewage department, too. Good news, Lakers are winning 43-34 in the second quarter. Took me 15 minutes to figure it out, how to get the score. It was worth the wait. Fifteen minutes. My question is, I looked at the confidential report, which is not that confidential, in the green packet of the list, and there are over a dozen accounts that are over $1,000, and one account which is $2,400. And the report constantly talks about protecting the assets of the taxpayers. I forgot to pay my bill on time, and I just paid it last week, and I didn't want to use Bill Pay because it was a little bit late, and I don't know if any of the council members have ever tried to pay the sewage by the 800 number, or the local number, actually. You should really try it. It's basically beyond ESL students who need remedial help with comprehension. It is so slow. And it also gives a challenge that if you do not pay right now, your account will be closed in two weeks, or, and it gives a date. And I asked for a receipt just to make sure, and sure, I was going to bring the receipt, but there's a line there that says, "Subject to Disconnection, June 23." That's for my own sewer. I mean, it's laughable, I mean, these are the kind of things that are happening, I mean, in this great country where, you know, Google and BlackBerry, I mean, are the inventions, and government is at such a low level. I apologize, but I'm not making enough, these are facts. So that's why I'm asking the council to try to make some of these changes. And then again, why, why are some of these people owing over $1,000? Why is there no, not an aggressive effort made to collect on it despite all the nice saying that it's going to the, there's a lien going to be done, et cetera? Some of the, and the interesting thing is, I looked at these streets, most of the, a lot of these, there's some from the good areas, but there's a lot of them from the lower-income condominiums and apartments, et cetera. And it also shows that the economy is having an effect, and maybe something can be done to help some of the people also, rather than just this effort to blacklist them. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I hope the Lakers win tonight, we really need to do it. Prayer does help.
Thank you, Ms. Kidway. Ms. Scott, do you have any further comments or responses to anything that came up?
I guess just that several of these accounts are, oh, I guess if I, if I went back just a little bit, yes, the economy is having an effect on our delinquent accounts, you can see it clearly. We, we had about $27,000 last year, we're at $52,000 this year. We're seeing more and more delinquent accounts, but our best effort is to attach it to the property tax rolls and attempt to recover it that way.
Thank you, Ms. Mitney.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, as Terry Scott just pointed out, yes, the dollar amounts are up, but in terms of numbers, we're still 1% or less, which is, or less than 1% of the, is there, how many thousand total? 45,000 total?
We have 37,000 connections, and 212 are the ones that we're trying to attach. So you can see that it's a much smaller percentage than you would think. And also, by attaching to the tax rolls, we have achieved a 98.8% recovery on those. So it's very helpful to do that.
So with a delinquency rate of less than 1%, I can assure you that we're in the top 1% or 2% of cities in the state. It's an extraordinarily low delinquency rate, and we have to do this process as a matter of law every year.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? None. In that case, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to continue on a closed hearing basis. Mr. Fox?
Sure, I'll move that we continue this item on a closed hearing basis for, to the next council meeting, when we'll have a two-thirds.
Thank you. Questions? None, please vote.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. And Ms. Lawrence, you have department reports.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmembers, a general municipal election will be held on Tuesday, November 4, 2008, for the purpose of electing two city council members for four-year terms. The nomination period is July 14, 2008, through August 8, 2008, and is extended to August 13, if an incumbent does not file to run for office. Staff is requesting council take the following action: Adopt the following resolutions. One, a resolution calling and giving notice of the election. Two, a resolution requesting the Ventura County Board of Supervisors to consolidate this election with the statewide presidential election, including a contract with the county for election services. And three, a resolution adopting regulations for the candidate statement. This resolution includes the estimated cost of $1,130, which the candidate will deposit with the city if they choose to submit a candidate statement for printing in the sample ballot. Additionally, staff is requesting authorization for an expenditure not to exceed $32,000 for the contract with the county for election services, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? None? Do I hear a motion? Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Move to approve recommendations one and two.
If no questions, please vote.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. And hearing, or report 9B.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. On March 3, 2008, a notice of intent to circulate a petition and the proposed initiative measure titled "Thousand Oaks Citizens for Protecting Senior and Workforce Housing Against Increased Density," aka Ericson's Law, was filed with the City Clerk Department. The ballot title and summary was prepared by the city attorney and provided to the proponents, followed by publishing of the notice of intent and circulation of the petition. The petition was filed with the City Clerk Department on May 16. City clerk staff performed a preliminary raw count of the petition's sections and signatures, and the proponents were provided a receipt for 1,036 estimated number of sections and 11,031 estimated number of signatures. The petitions were delivered to the Ventura County Elections Division to perform a random sampling examination of the signatures pursuant to Elections Code 9115. Elections Code 9115 allows random sampling verification of signatures for petitions showing more than 500 signatures. The county provided a signature verification certificate, which is attachment 3 to your staff report, page 87 of your agenda packet. We did want to point out that the county's raw count of the petitions determined a total of 1,035 petitions, which was one less than the city's preliminary count, and signatures totaling 11,022, which was nine signatures less than the city's preliminary count. 423 out of the 500 random sampling were found to be valid, computing to an 84.6 percentage, and that percentage types the raw count of the signatures equals 9,325 valid signatures. That figure meets and exceeds 10% of the number of signatures required to qualify for a general municipal election, which would have been 7,147. On May 27, City Council directed staff to prepare an impact analysis report on the proposed measure. And pursuant to Elections Code 9212, this report will be presented to the City Council no later than 30 days after the election official certifies to the City Council the sufficiency of the petition. The impact analysis report has been scheduled for consideration on July 8, and the council will also be asked to either adopt the ordinance without alteration or add this proposed measure to the November 4, 2008 general municipal election, at which time the ordinance will be submitted to the voters. Staff is requesting approval of the recommendations outlined in your staff report, and I am available for any questions on the process.
Thank you very much. Questions? Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Lawrence. Regarding the Election Code 9215, is it, would it have been possible for the City Council at all to make the decision or to be given the elections options tonight rather than July 8?
Since the council took the action on May 27 to prepare the impact analysis report and directed that be brought back on July 8, that is when it's scheduled.
And what is the reason for reconfirming the May 27 vote?
That's just a technicality that, since we're certifying tonight, that you have 30 days to bring the impact analysis report back, and so we're reconfirm, reconfirming that action, to make sure it comes back July 8.
And the impact report is being done by city staff, not an outside consultant, correct?
City attorney can answer that.
Part of the impact report is being done by the city staff, and part of the impact report is being done in consultation with an outside law firm.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know, because I didn't know that, that, I don't know whether we discussed the outside law firm at the last council meeting.
I'm not sure if we did or didn't, but what we did say is that the council had, in an earlier action back in, and I won't misspeak the dates, I believe it was March, I may have the dates wrong, had appropriated 25,000 more dollars to go to help pay for expenses concerning Measure B, what became Measure B, and then to also assist with any legal work on the Mobile Home Park Initiative. And so I think we mentioned in the financial impact report of the May 27 action that that would be the source of some of the funding.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any further questions? None? Our first public speaker is Brenda Feldman, followed by John Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers and staff. My name is Brenda Feldman, I am a resident of Newberry Park. We moved to Westlake Village in 1976, so we consider Thousand Oaks our home. There is no place we would rather live, because Thousand Oaks is such a well-run city with good people who are concerned for all their citizens. In many ways, Thousand Oaks leads not only the county, but the state and the country. We are blessed to live here, and you have done much to make this a great place to live. Thank you. Before I speak to our initiative, I have a favor to ask on behalf of all the folks who are watching TV at home this evening. It is difficult for many of them to make it here. While we come early and save the front few seats for those who cannot climb stairs, it is extremely difficult for some of us to sit for long periods of time. The aches and pains take over, and we have to move around. This is hard when there are stairs involved. Therefore, we are requesting that for the July 8 council meeting, might it be possible to move the discussion of our initiative near the beginning of the evening's agenda? We would be most grateful. The wonderful folks who are at home watching us on TV tonight are the veterans of World War II and the Korean conflict. They are the retirees living on fixed incomes who are too tired or frail to make it here, and they are frightened that they will not be able to live out their twilight years in their own homes, surrounded by their friends who really look out for them. For years, they have given so much to our community. Our initiative provides a modicum of security for them and us to live out our last years in peace. Councilman Fox, we were so grateful to hear at the May 27 council meeting that you understand our need and will see about getting us some legal security. We are all praying that you will adopt our initiative on July 8 without going to ballot. We will be here watching you care for all of us the way we care for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman. Mr. Leslie, followed by Benny Mayu.
Mayor Protem, Glancy, and members of the city council, good evening. My name is John Leslie, and I have been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 27 of the past 30 years. I'm here tonight, speaking tonight on behalf of the mobile home residents of Thousand Oaks, of which I am one. Last month, after the valiant efforts of many Thousand Oaks residents, we succeeded in getting the petition qualified, the subject to which is the protection of the rights of mobile homeowners of Thousand Oaks, and the provision for just compensation to such mobile homeowners in the event that the mobile home park in which they reside is closed. By this action, we hope, excuse me, by this action, we hope to prevent the unethical actions taken by the purchaser of the Canale Mobile Home Park and the lack of just compensation to the owners of the mobile homes therein. It is my understanding that that petition has qualified to be put on the ballot in November, so that the citizens of Thousand Oaks may vote on it. As I am sure you are aware, in spite of an arbitrary California state definition of affordable housing in our city, with the exception of special needs residents, we as mobile homeowners are indeed the only affordable housing in Thousand Oaks. Further, a significant percentage of our mobile homeowners are seniors, military veterans, the physically handicapped, and people of very limited incomes. Also, our unique situation of owning our homes but renting the lots on which they are located makes us especially vulnerable residents. Further, as I am also sure that you are aware, we, along with many other California residents, defeated Proposition 98 last week, which although entitled eminent domain, deceptively included a provision which it passed would have phased out rent control in California, including the provisions of our thousand- including the provisions of our Thousand Oaks Mobile Home Park Rent Control Ordinance, an ordinance which provides for inflation adjustment of the rental fees charged by our mobile home park owners. Therefore, we thank all of the citizens who helped us to defeat this deceptive measure. Accordingly, because we are the only truly affordable housing in Thousand Oaks and because we believe our cause, combined with the recent defeat of Proposition 98, could be just for the future of affordable housing in Thousand Oaks, we hereby asking you, our City Council, to adopt our initiative into law so that it will not have to go on the November ballot. We are asking this action on the part of you, our City Council, because unlike the sponsors and opponents of Proposition B, which was on our Thousand Oaks ballot last week, we do not have the huge budgets that Lumber City, that is, the Do-It Center, Home Depot, and other sponsors and opponents were able to spend to publicize their respective positions on that matter. For these reasons, we ask you, our City Council, to adopt our initiative into law. We would appreciate your comments on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your kind attention and consideration.
Penny Mayu, followed by Alfredo Sandoval.
Penny Mayu, 35-year resident and 26-year resident at Canale Mobile Home Park. We all understand that land is getting very scarce. Our park and another park possibly will be too closed by developers. Absolutely, we feel no mobile home park should be closing here in the Canale Valley. They are the last affordable housing. All parks are now a sitting duck for developers due that there is no protection for any of them. By adopting this initiative, it would give all parks in Canale Valley some protection and a safety net to fall back on. The community and all parks are behind us. We even had developers sign the initiative, saying it was only fair. I cannot conceive of any of you not wanting this protection for all the residents living in a mobile home park. I want to thank Brenda Feldman for her courage in doing what needed to be done. Without her help in Vallecito and the rest of the parks, the initiative would not have been. Vallecito should be proud to have them on her side. I hope on July 8th, we will have your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayu. Alfredo Sandoval, followed by Alma Lopez.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Alfredo Sandoval, live in Canale Mobile Home Park. I'm a father of three little girls, that two of them goes to the, one of the best schools here, and the school is named Madrona Elementary. And I feel like my, my girls are safe here. I don't want to go out of here. I want to be here, raise my children, my girls here, and I ask you, ask him for your support. And we work, everybody here work hard to get this petition done, and we ask you again for your support, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Alma Lopez, followed by Janet Wall.
Good evening. My name is Alma Lopez. I am a resident of the Canale Mobile Home Park, and tonight I am here to ask you to adopt the initiative. You will set a precedent for other mobile home parks that you can be proud of, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Wall, followed by Nikidway, who will be our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Glancy, and other council members. First, and most importantly, I would like to congratulate all the mobile home park residents who worked so hard to get Erickson's Law on the November ballot. We have a truly remarkable group of people in this town, including those who signed the petition, recognizing the unfair situation that exists when people who live in mobile home parks will be required to walk away from their property with so little money they won't be able to survive elsewhere. Second, although no one knows yet how the impact report for the Mobile Home Park Initiative will be used, everyone realizes the possibility that it will be used in the same manner as Measure B's impact report to support large development. In addition, it could set a precedent that not only harms existing low-income residents, seniors, and veterans in mobile home parks, but adds an extra burden to the city with homeless residents or longtime residents forced to move from their town. As council members, you will have an opportunity to stop the emotional terror that Canale residents and some Elms Plaza homeowner residents have endured for the past several years. In closing, I encourage you to adopt Erickson's Law on July 8th and to act with the same integrity, responsibility, and loving spirit embodied by the San Luis Obispo Board of Supervisors on April 22nd this year, when they voted to protect a large segment of, and I quote, "affordable" housing by authorizing their staff to prepare a new home, mobile home park zone and to carefully scrutinize how to protect and upgrade substandard parks in their cities. Fixed-income residents, seniors, and veterans do not have the money to fight a City Council impact report that joins with mobile home park owners and other wealthy developers who are determined to close their parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Mr. Kidway?
I don't see Mr. Kidway. I'd like to say that we have nine statement cards, all in favor of. Also make the remark that we really can't comment on anything that was brought up seeking a comment because it wasn't agendized, but with that.
Thank you, Mr. Glancy. I would like to move recommendations of item number one and three. One is to receive the elections official certificate of sufficiency, and three is to authorize expenditure of $1,000.
Comments to the motion?
Two can be dealt with in a separate motion.
Right. Please vote. Okay, Mr. Fox?
Carry it through zero.
Okay. We're finished? We need a motion of some sort on number, on item two.
There's some particular rea, okay, then I'll move the recommendation on item two, which is reconfirm the May 27th in direction to staff to prepare an impact analysis report.
Ms. Bill De La Pena.
And for housekeeping purposes, I did vote against that on May 27th because I felt that perhaps this particular report could be used to fight against the initiative Erickson's Law, but it is my fervent hope that the City Council will adopt the Mobile Home Initiative for which you fought so hard with, with everything you had, all the efforts despite disabilities and restrictions and other things. You are to be congratulated on that, and it is my hope that it will be adopted into law without any alterations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fox, make her the motion.
Yeah, you know, I just got a comment. I'm a little concerned about how this whole issue is being framed up and Measure B is coming in and, and, you know, sat here quietly for a couple of months and heard how the will of the people needed to be respected, and we just, folks just need an opportunity to vote. And then they had a vote, and some folks don't agree with how the people voted. And so now here we are again with another initiative, and people are peppering in innuendo somehow that this city or this council is supporting large development over mobile home park owners, when the facts over many, many years clearly point the opposite direction. And so, you know, what we need to do is proceed with this. My sense is we're going to get a legal analysis, as I've talked to a number of people. The initiative, as I understand it, could have some problems with respect to legal rights. And as I've said many times, we need to be straightforward with mobile home park residents, two of which are my mother and father. And so more than anybody else in this chamber, certainly in the City Council, I can appreciate the plight and the situation that many of our seniors and, and veterans are in, but I'm not certainly going to take advantage of their vulnerability for political points. And that's what I see happening here, and it's too bad. And so I'm not going to sit and remain quiet while this thing goes on and I see people coming in and taking advantage and trying to score political points, maybe even at the, at the expense of people who really have no other place to live. And so it's a serious issue that we need to look at, we need to analyze it, and it may not be just as simply as voting for it and then it's in and people think they have the protections they don't have. If we get a legal analysis, and the legal analysis is that it in fact will stand the test of a court challenge, at least at some level, I'll be the first one to make, in fact, I'll make the motion that we adopt it and put it into law. But we need to take it step by step and see what they've done. There's been reference made to other cities. I don't know if those other cities are in court. Maybe, Ms. Obano, maybe you can comment. Is it the city of San Luis Obispo, are they in court?
Um, I haven't, it's the county of San Luis, and based on what I just heard, we have been looking. They have not adopted it yet. They're, they haven't actually done it, is my understanding. We've been doing research since the May 27th meeting when they came forward and talked about different cities that were involved, and so we do have contacts out, and we hope to be able to bring all that information forward when we come back on July 8th.
Good. All right, so again, you know, these things are thrown out, but you don't get the full picture. And so, you know, I'm for full disclosure, let's put the, the light of day on this whole issue, let's take a look at it, let's evaluate it in the open at a public hearing, and let's see exactly what we are doing, and if in fact it can be legally defended, as I said before, I'll be the first one to make the motion to put it into law, because we need to do the best we can to protect the residents in the mobile home parks. And this council has a long history of doing that, and I would just remind the folks that live in mobile home parks what this council has done over the past several years, certainly long before some of the current, quote, advocates for mobile home park owners have come into play. So that'd be my comment. I'm certainly going to move forward with this motion, and I look forward to the analysis coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Will you please vote on item two?
Mr. Glancy, I just wanted to make a quick comment.
I believe that's out of order. Please vote.
May I make a comment now, after the vote has been announced?
The vote does show 3-0, but...
No, that was a mistake, actually.
2-1.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And for 9C, Mr. Alawami, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council.
Excuse me, am I not allowed to make a comment after the vote? Just for, just for balance purposes, I'll be very brief, Mr. Glancy.
You really don't want to get into it he said, she said, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it is not for political, political reasons at all, because there's, there's too much at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you. You just did it. Mr. Alawami.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. Equipment renter yards are permitted uses in industrial zones, both the M1 and M2 zone, with a development permit application without any limitations or restrictions. They're also allowed in the C2 zone, but with a special use permit application subject to specific limitations and restrictions on the number and types of equipment and surfaces that could be provided. The applicant, Calio Rant, has expressed a desire to relocate the current business, which is located at 661 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, to a suitable industrial location with no success. So he purchased a property located at 80-90 Clay Court, which is Zone C2, and has filed a special use permit application to construct a new facility at that site. The new site has challenging development conditions, which include site to biography potential freeway corridor, visibility, and oak trees. This issue will be evaluated when the entitlement applications are processed. In order to relocate the business and meet the needs, the applicant has submitted a letter requesting that the council amend the code to change the regulations within the C2 zone to allow greater flexibility in equipment and surfaces that could be provided at equipment renter yards. If the council initiates the amendment, staff will analyze the amendment in terms of what, what appropriate controls would be required of renter yards in the C2 zone. These controls will be imposed through the special use permit in order to ensure compatibility of the use with surrounding developments and avoid any negative visual impacts. As mentioned, the applicant has filed a special use permit application for the new project, and staff recommends that the council authorize concurrent processing of the entitlement applications with the amendment. If the council initiates the amendment and authorize concurrent processing, the request will be referred to the planning commission for publicating and recommendation back to City Council. With that, staff will answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alawami. Any questions of staff? Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you, Mr. Glancy. Good evening, Mr. Alawami. This particular request to initiate a municipal code amendment obviously could potentially have far-reaching effects, and as part of this initiate, to initiate an amendment, will you look at the, the impacts this could have on all of the C2 zones in Thousand Oaks?
Yes, that's the, that's the intent of the amendments, to look at not just the location, but all the commercial zone property, C2 zone on Newberry, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Newberry Road.
Any other areas that have a C2 zone other than those two you mentioned?
Um, not to my knowledge. The majority are on those two streets.
And what exactly, what impacts will you be investigating or studying?
It's mostly the visual impact of the equipments, the rental equipments themselves, and any associated, if there's maybe requests for concrete mixing or another request is the associated activities with that. And typically, mostly it would be the visual impact because of a higher, the equipments are tall or wide, and where they're going to be stored and how they're going to be stored.
Besides visual impact, what about audible impact, noise, potential noise?
That definitely could be considered in our evaluation of the request, based on the surrounding properties.
I'm looking at the map here, and I'm not quite certain whether there are any residential areas nearby. There seem to be four parcels behind Clay and Jensen there behind the proposed location, and I'm, I'm just wondering, and even if they are not residential areas, they're, if they're office buildings or other buildings, whether the noise could have any potential impact. I think that that would be important to, to analyze or study as well.
We'll do that.
Additional questions of staff? Mr. Fox?
I just noted in the staff report that we're going to be seeing a oak tree permit coming through with a special use permit. Am I reading that right?
If the council authorized concurrent processing, the council will review all entitlements, including oak tree permit, yes.
Is it contemplated that there's going to be removal of oak trees?
We have not received oak tree permit yet from the applicant, but yes, because of the, the site is, has, has a lot of oak trees on site.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture it. It is, there's a lot of oaks there. So, all right, I guess we'll just deal with that when it comes back, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sellers, your first speaker, and followed by Denny Blum.
Good evening, Mark Sellers. I'm here, I'm with the Jackson Demarco Law Firm, here on behalf of Mr. Gudinoff tonight, who is requesting the consideration of this tax amendment so that he can justify moving off Thousand Oaks Boulevard to a location such as Clay Court. The staff report indicated that this might be a use that is better suited for the M1 zone or the M2 zone. The problem is there are simply no vacant available M1 zone, zone property in the city of Thousand Oaks. The largest holder of that type of property or zone property is the Chappelle Industries. Mr. Gudinoff has tried to purchase some of the Chappelle property for his relocation. That has been unsuccessful. I was asked by staff to contact Chappelle Industries and find out why. I called Alan Cummins, who is present... I called Alan Cummins, who is president of Chappelle Industries, and was told that a number of reasons. One, Chappelle is looking for a more research-oriented use such as Baxter. Chappelle is also looking for a buyer of far greater acreage than Mr. Gudinoff needs. And three, and probably most important right now, is that Chappelle is not interested in selling any property. They feel this is a down market, they have a tremendously low basis in that property, they have no need to sell it for economic reasons, and they're simply going to wait on any sale till the market comes up to where they feel it should be. So there is no vacant land in the M1 zone for this kind of use, which forced Mr. Gudinoff to look at C2 property. He found the site on Clay Court. That site does have its challenges. Those challenges will certainly be addressed at the appropriate time in the planning commission hearing, with the oak tree permit, the special use permit, and all other issues related to that application. What we're asking for tonight is basically to allow the flexibility for the specific use process to run its course, because every site is different. And with a specific use process, you can decide, this is an appropriate site for this equipment, or not an appropriate site for this equipment, and get into a very specific, detailed analysis. What we feel is wrong here is that this prejudges every site in the C2 zone for these certain listed equipment that are now been on the books for 30 years. And Mr. Gudinoff can go into how that's antiquated, and that there are a lot of uses in the C2 zone with equipment rental in other cities and that sort of thing, that are quite appropriate, because screening, because of enclosures, because of the location, where it's not near any residential uses, et cetera. So, the bottom lines, we're asking that the special use permit process be allowed to implement each application on a case-by-case basis, and not prejudge certain equipment. The final comment I just want to make is that I am a member of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Property Association. We have looked at his request, we approve his request, we are in the process of submitting a specific plan. His request is consistent with that specific plan, because the key issue in that specific plan is the frontage along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's a hundred-foot depth there that we're trying to preserve with pedestrian-oriented uses that equipment rental is not consistent with. So we're supportive of the application from...
Thank you, Mr. Sellers.
With that, Mr. Bloom.
Ms. Bloom, you're next, followed by Russ Gaddo.
Evening. My name's Denny Bloom. I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm with West Court Commercial Group. I've been with them for 28 years. I'm also a member of the Thousand Oaks Business District, and also a member of the bid committee. I've represented Russ for a very long time, and we've looked high and low through all the M-zone areas in the city, and there just isn't any property. The only area that really is part of the general plan that was zoned M is down in Newbury Park, and Mr. Sellers alluded to the situation with Chappelle. All the other M2 zoning that's up into the city is not available. It's already used. There is a rental yard already over there. You can't have two rental yards right next to one another. I don't, I made two offers to Chappelle for Russ, and they just weren't interested in selling. You know, his business is really like a hybrid. It really is a retail business. It happens to be in our M zoning that we put rental yards. But if you think about it, it's retail. My first life, spent 20 years in retail, and I honestly don't think this is an industrial use. Granted, it shouldn't be on the Boulevard, maybe it should be slightly off the Boulevard. It's in the same categories as nurseries, things of that nature. We're putting a nursery on the Boulevard. I'm sure there's enough conditions on that nursery to make it absolutely gorgeous. And you can do the same thing when you're conditioning a rental yard. He also needs to be close to where he was, because I used to say in retail, walls have memories. Customers go to a particular spot, what happened? Where is it? He's going to be about a block and a half from where he would normally be. That's an excellent spot for him. It's down the hill, you cannot see it from the freeway. I'm sure the staff's going to have him shoot pictures so you can see that. It's an excellent place for him to put his business. The special use permit is just out of date. It needs to be updated with new types of equipment. This special use permit that was written for rental yards was written 35 years ago. Equipment's changed, and we just need to update it. And we normally don't do things like that in the city until we have an application that causes us to do it. And that's where we are with this. And that's really all I have to say. Let's get this done quickly. I want to go watch the end of the Laker game.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Mr. Gudinoff?
I appreciate Denny coming down here, since he's such a rabid Laker fan. It's quite a sacrifice. Good evening to all of you, all three of you. I'm Russ Gudinoff, home resident of Thousand Oaks and a business resident for 32 years. My business, CaliRent, has been at its current location since 1976, and prior to that, the location also served as a rental facility going back to 1959, five years before we incorporated as a city. We are grandfathered in the types of equipment we rent. We are currently located in a C2 zone property under special use permit conditions. I'm also a member of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association Board of Directors, and the Business Improvement District Board, called the Management Committee. There are two zones proposed in the specific plan that's been presented to the city by the bid. One is called the downtown zone, and that is where Clay Court is located. An equipment rental facility is allowed in the specific plan for the downtown zone. There are reasons why several uses in the Boulevard zone may not be in agreement with our vision, our collective vision. Equipment rental may be one of them. For that reason, and the fact that in the current economic climate, I need to expand or risk failure, I am strongly considering a move from my business. We have been searching, as Denny mentioned, on a continual basis for available M1 zone land for well over three years. There is just none available of sufficient size to be a home for my company. The wording in the current ordinance allowing rental yards in C2 zone property is exactly the same as it was when I established in 1976. Equipment specifications, use, design, and capabilities have changed significantly since that time. For example, the same-sized truck can now carry a much larger payload, yet the ordinance specifies size only. Lister Rents and CaliRent, where the only two equipment rental facilities located in Thousand Oaks, have no three-axle trucks and no large equipment, yet we do not qualify under the current ordinance. If I am to move, I need the wording changed, or I'll be forced to stay on the Boulevard indefinitely, and I ask your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gudinoff. Counsel discussion, Mr. Fox.
Sure. You know, every now and then, something, and I think Mr. Bloom hit the nail on the head, many times when we look at updating things, sometimes it's initiated by staff who's proactive in looking at things. There's other times where, you know, things get brought to our attention that have essentially been on the books, as it were, for a number of years. And I think it's obvious that, you know, the type of equipment and the type of use over the past 35 years probably warrants a reexamination of this special use permit. And I think, as Mr. Sellers pointed out, it actually offers the council a great degree of flexibility in looking at things on a case-by-case basis. So this makes a lot of sense. It's certainly in keeping with what we're trying to do along the Boulevard. You know, with all due respect to longtime business and somebody who has been a customer, it's probably better located off the Boulevard, but close. And so it makes a lot of sense. And so, unless there's not an objection, I'm going to move the staff recommendation and the MCA 2006-70809, and then we'll look for the specifics of the special use permit to come back to the planning commission.
Ms. Bill De La Penya.
I too will support the motion, with the expectation that staff will do a thorough investigation or analysis of the impacts, such as noise or traffic, because, as was mentioned earlier, this evening, C2 is not going to be only this particular parcel. There will be other parcels, there are other parcels in the city, which will be affected by this as well. And of course, there is a concern about removal of oak trees, so I will nonetheless support the motion.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. There are no redevelopment agency reports tonight. Mr. Watson, our housing and redevelopment manager, going to talk to us about a commissioner to AHA.
Mayor Proten, Glancy, and council members, the item before you is a request to confirm appointment of resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority. The Area Housing Authority represents the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as seven other communities, including the unincorporated county. Each of those entities select two commissioners for a total of 14. Their commissioner board is made up of 15 members. The 15th person is a resident commissioner selected from one of their facilities. They have a vacancy for that position. They undertook an interview process and are recommending the selection or confirmation of Mr. Tomas Garcia. He is a six-year resident of Florence Jan's Apartments here in Thousand Oaks. The appointment will be for a two-year term, ending in May 2010. And with that, conclude my report with the recommendation to adopt the resolution confirming appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Any comments or questions of staff? None, thank you very much. May we have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Bill De La Penya.
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. There are no follow-up reports on meetings and conferences tonight. So, Mr. Mitnick, city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor Proten, members of the council, by way of follow-up, a request from the public tonight, just two things commented on. We heard from one speaker about issues in the equestrian community over in, sort of near Cano Oaks. There are ongoing code enforcement issues and so on, and staff will follow up accordingly with the individual. We also heard from an individual about street storage concerns on Brazil Street. I believe our police chief and/or assistant city manager has followed up with that individual, but where appropriate, we'll follow up and do an update memo to the full council. The next item on state budget cuts, council is aware of the ongoing saga up in Sacramento. Right now, the state is looking at a $17.2 billion deficit. The number kind of goes up and down by a billion here, a billion there. The governor is proposing a ballot measure in November, setting up a rainy day fund and dealing with the lottery, et cetera. We'll keep an eye on that. If that measure does fail, and the governor is proposing to enact a sales tax trigger to raise the sales tax at the state level by 1% until this rainy day fund is funded or until the year 2010. He's also looking at convening a bipartisan committee to examine how state sales tax works and how to, one day, get a balanced state budget. Based on the governor's may revise budget, I know this is kind of complicated, how all this stuff works, and it's like, sort of a shell game at times, but the may revise that the governor did propose, on paper anyhow, leaves local governments alone. And luckily, due to the leadership envisioned by the League of California Cities and Proposition 1A that the voters approved a few years ago, I'd like to remind council and the public that served local government very well. So we appear to be in good shape, but you're still looking at a huge deficit and problem in Sacramento. And as we keep advising the council, the state will come and take money from local government, especially cities, and just a matter of when that does happen. The legislative analyst in Sacramento, in response to the governor's proposed may revise budget, had some fairly significant draconian cuts to cities, but the Assembly and State Senate Budget Committees are not in support of that. So it's really, we don't have any specific details to share with you, but we are continuing to monitor, and Mia Leba, as our legislative analyst, is monitoring Sacramento, and she's going up there frequently. So we are keeping a close eye on what's going on up there. Announcements for upcoming issues, the next council meeting will be on June 24, but prior to that, this weekend, to remind council, June 14, Saturday, is Flag Day, and there will be the annual wreath laying and flag retirement ceremony, the Huberth Memorial, out in front of the Civic Gardens Plaza. So those who can attend might want to do so. The next council meeting, June 24, one public hearing at this time, and that's the smoking ordinance follow-up, and the city attorney's office has been doing a good job with the outreach to the business community. We'll also have the continuation of the wastewater lanes, that has a closed public hearing. The department reports, two worth noting, the auto mall parking design consultant selection will be in front of council, and the Old Town West master plan review will be in front of council. The following meeting will be on July 8, and we have one hearing right at this time, the Rancho Neighborhood Zone Change, that came in front of council, believe it or not, a year ago. That's coming back. And then we heard earlier about the Mobile Home Park Initiative. You'll have a decision on election options, as well as receiving the impact analysis report. So that is it. By way of city manager, follow-up.
Thank you, Ms. Mitnick. Our closed session has been continued, so tonight we'd like to adjourn in the memory of Uma Avua, a 22-year city employee who served the library as a senior librarian assistant for 20 years, followed by two years of administrative work in code compliance. Uma was a unique individual. Every person who knew her shared the same thought. She was incredibly gentle, friendly, and a positive spirit. Uma and her husband, Arun, met an Indian, were married within six months. Within the short time of their marriage, they immigrated to the United States and were subsequently blessed with two sons, who are now married with families of their own. Reading, gardening, and traveling the globe with her husband filled Uma's later years, while still providing excellence in her work with the city of Thousand Oaks. Uma will be very missed by her family and coworkers, and we wish to express our sincerest condolences to the family. With that, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting to the regular scheduled meeting of June 24, 2008, at 6:00.